The Wauwatosa School Board to order, please, with a moment of silent reflection. Ms. Galanti, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Jeros?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
I would like to read a statement to begin. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly-scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The School Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on a non-agenda item at this time? If so, please come to the mic and give your name and address. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Mrs. Muehlfeld, thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Board members, do you have any item on the agenda, the consent agenda, that you would like to have withdrawn and address separately? Seeing none? Any comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the non-agenda The check register is up here for anyone who wishes to review that. Seeing no further discussion, or, excuse me, no further attention. Mrs. Mue- Mrs. Galanti, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes. Under recognitions, Mr. Jeros, would you begin?
Yes. Students from four Wauwatosa school districts, schools have been selected for the 2012 Young People's Art Exhibition sponsored by Golden Guernsey Dairy. The winning artwork will be on display in the lobby of the Wisconsin Exposition Center during the 2012 Wisconsin State Fair, August 2nd to the 12th. The Golden Guernsey Dairy Best of Show was awarded to the top junior and senior winners. Aaron Shout, Whitman Middle School, won Best of Show in the junior division. Best of Show in the senior division was awarded to Aaron Jernecki East High School. Each student received an award of $250. The Artist in Display Award, Best Drawing, Senior Division, was awarded to Brad Limbrick, East High School. Michael Lefler, East High School, received the Special Needs Artwork Award. First-place winner in the junior division were Richard Seer, Whitman, and Harry Hensler of Longfellow. Receiving cash awards in the senior division were East High School Madeline Ferguson, Ryan Blaney, Amanda Cummings, and Colleen Heck. And from West High School, Kevin Friends, Nasra Mohammed, Aaron Rittenhour, and Shannon Wilson. Third-place awards were given to Longfellow Middle School students Sarah Dempsey and Sally Sulkin.
The 2012 Friends of Education Award recipients, school support staff, and volunteers, were honored for their contribution to the education of students in the Wauwatosa School District. The honorees were recognized in an awards presentation on April 24th at West High School. The recipients are Beverly McWilliams, East High School; Kathy Calley, West High School; Dave Dombrowski, Longfellow Middle School; Cindy Schlitt, Whitman Middle School; Priya Kanongo, Eisenhower Elementary; Pastor Chris Manke, Jefferson Elementary; Deb Hermsen, Lincoln Elementary; Greg and Sue Furman, McKinley Elementary; Curtis Uden, Madison Elementary; Charmaine Ravishaw, Roosevelt Elementary; Janice Carolin, Underwood Elementary; Terry Uden, Washington Elementary; Kim Renzel, Wilson Elementary; Barb Hill, W. Stem; Enrico Hernandez, Detention Center, Plank Road, River Hills Children's Hospital.
Wauwatosa West Senior Drew David Kanskus has been awarded the rank of Eagle Scout from Boy Scout Troop 111. His service project was to plan and lead the collection and donation of school supplies for a Milwaukee Public School first-grade class. With 17 volunteers, 125 service hours, and many gracious contributors, Drew not only met his objective of supplying materials for one class, but exceeded that goal and provided supplies for two classes. Wauwatosa West Junior Leah Rogers captured first place and was named state champion in the group discussion category in the Wisconsin Forensic Coaches Association for High School held recently. In addition, Senior Waj Ali was named a semifinalist in solo humorous acting, and sophomores Katie Rickett and Caitlin Hembrook were named semifinalists in duo acting. The tournament featured 66 schools and more than 1,000 students from throughout Wisconsin.
Students from Longfellow Middle and Lincoln Elementary Schools took top honors in the Wisconsin Future Problem Solving, or FPS, program's 30th Annual State Bowl held in April in Wisconsin Dells. Longfellow 6th grader Emma Hudson-Marratt placed first in the junior division individual booklet-writing competition. The win qualified Hudson Merritt to compete in the FPS Internationals, or FPSI, competition in June in Indiana. Frank Fee, Lincoln 5th grader, and Longfellow 6th graders Matt Doverstein, Ian Schmidt-Ernst, and Brody Spohler took first place in the junior division banner competition. Janet Fee, Longfellow 7th grader, placed third in the middle division individual booklet-writing competition. The coach is Dr. Renee McCudden, 5th grade teacher at Lincoln. At the state bowl, students brainstorm challenges, an underlying problem, and solutions for a future situation related to the topic of trade barriers. The FPSI involves more than 200,000 students from more than 45 states, two Canadian provinces, and five foreign countries. In Wisconsin, more than 150 teams from 25 school districts participated in this challenging program during the school year.
Thank you. And we...
This calls... This... This calls...
No. Okay. We thank each one of the young people for the work they've, and the success that they are enjoying. Again, it's always phenomenal to see what our young people are achieving. At this time, we will hold our annual election of Board Officers. Dr. Eardle?
Thank you. The first ballot is for nomination for President.
The two nominated are Mr. Meyer and Mrs. Weber. And this ballot is the vote for President. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer. And Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer will be the recommended member for President. Nominated for Vice President, Mrs. Fee, Mrs. Randall, Mr. Croner. So for the nominations for the vote, for Vice President will be for Mrs. Fee, Mr. Croner, And a vote for Vice President, Mrs. Fee, Mrs. Randall, Mrs. Randall, Mrs. Fee, Mrs. Randall, Mrs. Fee, and Mr. Croner. The second vote for Vice President, Mrs. Fee, Mrs. Randall, Mrs. Randall, Mrs. Fee, Mrs. Randall, Mrs. Fee, Mr. Croner. And the third vote for Vice President, Mrs. Fee, Mrs. Randall, Mrs. Randall, Mrs. Fee, Mrs. Randall, Mrs. Fee, Mrs. Fee. So the recommendation will be for Mrs. Fee for Vice President. The vote for Treasurer, Mr. Croner, Mr. Croner, Mrs. Randall, Mr. Croner, Mrs. Randall, Mr. Croner, Mrs. Randall. Mr. Croner will be the recommended member for Position of Treasurer. So on the vote, nominated was Mr. Jeros, Mrs. Muehlfeld, Mrs. Randall, and Mrs. Weber. The vote for Clerk, Mrs. Muehlfeld, Mr. Jeros, Mrs. Muehlfeld, Mrs. Randall, Mr. Jeros, Mrs. Randall, Mr. Jeros. The second vote for Clerk, Mr. Jeros, Mr. Jeros, Mrs. Randall, Mr. Jeros, Mrs. Muehlfeld, Mr. Jeros, and Mr. Jeros. Mr. Jeros will be recommended for Clerk.
Okay. Mrs. Fee, would you read the resolution on election of officers, please?
I would, except that I am one of the nominated individuals, so hopefully that's appropriate.
Mrs. Randall, would you like to do that, please? Thank you.
It is recommended that the following persons be elected officers of the Wauwatosa School Board in accordance with Policy Number 0150 for a term beginning tonight and ending in May 213, 2013, excuse me. Want the names at this time?
Yes, please.
President Mike Meyer, Vice President Ann Fee, Treasurer Phil Croner, and Clerk Tom Jeros. And it's further recommended that the Superintendent be appointed to act as Secretary to the Board, and I so move.
Second, Mrs. Muehlfeld. In the resolution, could we, rather than say tonight, could we please say the date of this day, please, in the resolution? This is May 7th. Is that agreeable? We'll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer? Would you like to stay there, or do you want to remain in the seat?
I'm fine staying right here.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Croner, will you please read the Human Resources motion?
Yes, thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve Thomas Kolczuski for Position of Manager of Buildings and Grounds with an administrative contract of 229 days and an annual salary of $95,000 effective June 4th, 2012, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm told that Mr. Mack would like to make some comments about the, about the motion.
Yes, I do. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about Tom. Tom has a degree from Illinois State University in marketing, and I believe a minor in economics. And by the way, Bruce Johnson had a degree in economics. Coincidence? I don't know. Tom had worked in baseball. He was a Director of Operations for the Wisconsin Timber Rattlers, and after that for the Lehigh Valley Pigs in Pennsylvania, which is a AAA-affiliated team with the Philadelphia Phillies. And for the past four years, he's been the manager of Building and Grounds for the Manasha School District. I think what you find with Tom, too, is he's got great communication skills and is good at, with people, and interacting and making presentations, and had a lot of the skillset that Bruce Johnson currently has, and I think he's going to do just a fantastic job stepping in after Bruce Johnson retires. So what I'd like to do is to ask you, if you have any questions, and Tom can maybe say a word, and then if you have any questions, ask him.
Thank you. Again, my name is Tom Kolczuski. Tough last name, if you look at it, but to say it's not bad. Again, Mr. Mack said I spent the last four years in Manasha Joint School District, in Fox Valley, where Dr. Eardle hails from. A nice-sized district, one high school, eight buildings, but before that I worked 11 years in professional baseball. Started growing up on farms, and then worked grounds crew, running baseball stadiums, and that's how I transitioned. We were looking back to, we were in Pennsylvania, we're looking to move back to Wisconsin, and I saw the opening at Manasha, and I thought, I could, if I could run a baseball stadium, I could run a school district. And absolutely love working in school districts, or a school district, and really, really excited about moving to Wauwatosa. My wife's a middle school counselor. My, we have a son that's three and a half, a daughter that'll be two next month, and another one coming in December, so we have a full household of students, so. But, but very excited, the opportunity, and, you know, when this, it's amazing, the last couple of weeks, what we've learned about the area, and when we looked at this job, I always thought, this should be the best job to have your, your children in the elementary school. So that was a big draw for us, you know, what, what the district has to offer, and it's pretty exceptional. You should be very proud of yourself, and what people say about the district, and what you hear and read. So that was a huge draw for us, and we're really looking, looking forward to becoming all-in. My, my wife really wanted to come tonight, but as many women know, when you have children, you're not feeling real well. So she sends her apologies, but, you know, we're very excited. So if you have any questions, love to hear them, and I'll be around starting June 4th, and very easy to read, so.
Board, does anyone have any questions? Mrs. Randall?
No questions, just a comment. Thank you, Mr. Mack, and we have been well-informed about your past experience and your skillset, and obviously, we trust Mr. Mack and Dr. Eardle to bring in the best. It's a huge job, as you know, but I know that Bruce will tell you that he's always had incredible support, so, welcome, and now you're closer to Millan Park.
Thank you, absolutely. They just need a baseball team, and we'll be good.
Yeah.
A healthy baseball team.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Is there any more board question or comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, Mrs. Galanti, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, and congratulations. Our next item on the agenda is student learning regarding graduation. Mrs. Muehlfeld, please, will you read the motion?
Yes. It is recommended that the School Board approve the attached lists of prospective graduates from Wauwatosa East and Wauwatosa West High Schools, with the understanding that students will complete all high school graduation requirements, and I so move.
Second?
Second. Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Mrs. Muehlfeld made the motion, and Mrs. Weber seconded. So is there any board comment? Is there any public comment? I'll just say this is quite a happy thing, to vote on all of these graduates from our school district. We're very happy for you all. Mrs. Galanti, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Next, there are the Superintendent's items. Mrs. Randall, please, will you read the motion for Item 1 and 2?
It is recommended that the School Board approve the appointment of Board Member Sharon Muehlfeld as District Representative to the Cooperative Educational Service Agency Number 1, CISA Number 1. This appointment includes attending the annual convention to be held on Tuesday, May 15th, 2012. It is also recommended that the School Board approve the adjusted school start/end times proposed and discussed at the April 23rd Board Meeting, which will have high schools start at 8:00 a.m., middle schools at 8:10 a.m., and elementary schools at 8:20 a.m. to improve safety concerns and staffing efficiency, and I so move.
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Randall moved, and Mrs. Fee seconded. Is there any board comment or question? Is there any public comment or question? Seeing none, please, Mrs. Galanti, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
The next agenda item is a report to the Board. The next agenda item is report to the Board. Dr. Eardle, I believe this will be?
Mrs. Ehrenberger.
Mrs. Ehrenberger? Okay.
Good evening. Mr. Anderson and I are here this evening to give you some information on the Read to Lead Task Force, and before I start, I just want to say that I, some of the report is directed at the state level, and so I probably can't say that I can comment on behalf of where the state is at on some things. However, in the last week, there has been some movement at the state level, which I will talk to you about tonight, toward addressing some of the things recommended in the Read to Lead report. I, not included in the Read to Lead report is the Wauwatosa information I gave you. That is not meant to be like an all-inclusive list of things that I think Wauwatosa School District does to meet Read to Lead. I just wanted to give you some indicators of how we have addressed some of our reading things that align in some ways to Read to Lead. It's no way inclusive or, it's an ever-changing, continuing, growing thing, but I thought it would give you some relevancy as you kind of wrap your heads around the Read to Lead recommendations. So to begin with, the task force is, it's a public-private partnership that was at the state level. I thought it was important that you have an opportunity to see who was on the task force. Certainly, the Governor of the state, who is from Wauwatosa, was on the task force, as well as Tony Evers, who is the Department of Public Instruction Superintendent of Schools, and also Steve Dykstra, many of you may know, he's in our community. He's been extremely active with other community members in the Wisconsin Reading Coalition, which is a very informative and helpful organization to inform reading for us. And you can see that it's made up of teachers and representatives and senators from across the state, so it's a diverse group of public partner, public-private partners to come up with the recommendations. As just a quick overview, the goal of the report is to ensure that every child can read by the end of 3rd grade. And I can say that this report, a lot of the language in the report is very aggressive, you know, that this is a task force that's very serious about addressing literacy in the state of Wisconsin. And it's, and I just want to remind you that the focus of the report is literacy, it's reading. And they're talking about children being able to do more than get a diploma, so they do address the college and career readiness and how important it is that all students are prepared with rigor for a future. Most importantly, evidence-based practices in literacy are at the core of the report. I think that we learned about this when we were going through our elementary reading adoption now, four years ago, and that the five basic components to a reading program, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension are essential components. That, the research program is based on research and best practice, and I would like to say that I feel that we address through the education of our long-range plan and advisement that those were important things that we addressed when we were doing our reading adoption four years ago. The other thing that the report also stresses is that families also have a role in reading achievement for children as well. So I'm going to go through some of the key points here. The four main areas that they address are early literacy screening, assessment, and intervention, accountability for reading, literacy in the state, aggressive staff development for, I'll give you a little more detail here, but teachers and administrators, improvement in how we prepare teachers to teach reading in the state, and also the increased family involvement. So as I go through this, I will try to remind you of pieces of this that the state is responsible for providing guidance for us. First of all, the report mentions Response to Intervention, and Response to Intervention is a State of Wisconsin initiative that we have been actively working on for the past three years now, and there are three key pieces to Response to Intervention in the state of Wisconsin. And those three key pieces, the Read to Lead Task Force reinforces all three of these. So one is a universal screener, beginning in kindergarten, and actually, this is for RTI, you'll see in Read to Lead, they actually recommend even some earlier screening, to have research-based scientific interventions for students that are not succeeding, and then to monitor the progress of those students and to be able to make continuous adjustment with interventions to ensure that they do read at grade level. So the screening is just actually, last Friday, I believe, we were notified that the universal screener that was recommended by the task force, they actually, was PALS. It's a phonological awareness-literacy screener. It is for all kindergartners in the state. That includes Wauwatosa kindergartners, beginning next fall, will be taking the PALS assessment. We are just trying to learn a little bit more about it. I do know that the, that it was adopted last Friday, and the DPI sent information out. Also, bipartisan legislation allocated $800,000 to budget for the screener. So state took some very serious action in support of the recommendation for a universal kindergarten screener. Now, in Wauwatosa, we have been screening students, certainly. The PALS comes very highly recommended, so I just have a list, not to go over all of these, but these are some of the screeners that we have been using, and most of you on the Board are probably familiar with the measures of academic progress. We had been using that as a universal screener. So clearly, one thing I can say is our kindergartners are used to having an assessment. The change for them will be, that we'll look to see how PALS will either replace or how that fits into the picture for us, but certainly, it is not negotiable to, the PALS will be given in Wauwatosa in the fall. So next is intervention. So obviously, the task force, there's some quotes I put in that I thought were helpful to us in understanding, the task force, when they were making recommendations here, the most efficient time to intervene for a struggling reader is as early as possible. So the task force recommends that interventions must be designed to meet a student's needs. They need to be scientifically, research-based. Again, that is something that we, as we went through choosing interventions and continue to do, we continue to add interventions to our list as we find that we're not meeting students' needs and continue to look for solutions. But the What Works Clearinghouse is one of the resources the task force mentions. That is a resource that was brought to our attention, and we do consult it regularly in trying to find interventions for our students. And grade 3 and above, the state must ensure that proper accommodations are given to ELL and students with disabilities. So on the next slide, again, this is a snapshot of interventions that we're currently using with students and our reading specialists. We continue to go through along in collaboration with our school psychologists. We look at our interventions, we look at success that students are having, we are looking for, we identify gaps. Just last week, we had a meeting where we did identify we have a gap, and we have an intervention that has been working really well for us, so for next year, we are hoping to be able to purchase, I mean, we plan to purchase the intervention to fill a gap that's around our first grade, second grade level right now. So as our teachers and reading specialists are implementing interventions, they're able to give us data back on what works and what doesn't work. I think to present, I checked our data really quickly. There are Tier 2 and 3 interventions. We have, we had to date 445 students receiving a Tier 2 or a Tier 3 intervention, and of those, I don't know if I have it handy here, but of those students, I think of Tier 3 students, we had 93 exit Tier 3, and we had 64 exit Tier 2 in our latest data. Assessment and monitoring, the Read to Lead Task Force emphasizes a balance between formative and summative assessment. Formative assessments are assessments that give teachers information on how to instructually meet the needs of a student in a classroom and make adjustments in order to be able to help students achieve. A summative assessment is an assessment that is typically one-time. It's, a lot of times, we take the snapshot for grading, but a summative assessment, some people call the autopsy, you know, it's kind of over. You know, a formative assessment is what you use to help students learn along the way. And we have focused on formative and summative assessments. We've worked a lot with our professional learning communities on how to use formative assessments in their collaborative teams so that they can help students learn without penalizing them for that learning. The Read to Lead Task Force talks about principles. Teachers, reading specialists need the tools, and they need to have staff development on how to use assessments and to guide instruction. And then the state should ensure student-level data is shared within, across systems, including early childhood, so there's good communication between K-12 schools, teachers, parents, reading specialists, and that's something that will wait for more guidance on the state. But currently, we do, actually, on one of, the next slide, you'll see, too, with our reading specialists, this year, we've done training on, we did an assessment for teacher gaps as well as student gaps. We look at teacher gaps in reading instruction as well as reading specialists, and we found that comprehension was an area that we needed more staff development on. So as a result of that, we, this year, provided staff development for our reading specialists in that area, which in turn, they provided to teachers through our professional learning community model. You'll also see later that with reading specialists, we did a lot of training on coaching, and we've really focused on coaching in the last two years. Again, here's a list of some of the things we use to progress monitor. We had piloted Dibbles last year, but this year, we moved to AmesWeb. We felt that it had some features that made it very user-friendly for us, and we're using AmesWeb with all of our Tier 3 students. And AmesWeb is a computer-based progress monitoring that we can use that gives, that we use very frequently. It's two to three times a week, maybe five times a week for a Tier 3. That gives us good information about how to intervene with a student. And those are some other things that we use that are listed here as well. Professional development, the Read to Lead Task Force tells us that the state should significantly invest in enhancing the skills of those educators that are currently teaching literacy, so that we need to make sure that we bring all educators up to a level of competency in delivering literacy instruction. They also talk about, the DPI should provide online, high-quality online staff development so that there could be some convenient way for teachers to receive the kinds of information they need on literacy. All professional development plans, teachers in the state of Wisconsin now, for initial educators, they have to do a professional development plan. There's never been a requirement for literacy in the past, but the task force is recommending that reading and writing be a mandatory part of the professional development plan that initial educators complete. They should also, the DPI should require professional development for teachers that are working with students where they're continually showing that their students have low performance, so, or low levels of achievement in reading, so that teachers that we know and we are aware that are not having the kind of success they need with low levels, or with reading literacy in their classroom, that they need to be paid attention to. This is where I talk a little bit about how we are trying to address some of that now with our coaching. We restructured our reading specialists when we had an opening, actually, I think it's been two years ago now, we had nine reading specialists at the elementary level, and we wanted to be able to increase the knowledge and skills of our teachers that are in the first level of teaching reading in the classroom. So instead of hiring another reading specialist, what we did is, we hired, we took the position and hired a consultant because we wanted to bring the skills of everyone up that had knowledge and background on literacy, early literacy, and we were able to hire the consultant to do coaching, where they go into our classrooms, and our reading specialists work alongside them, and they coach teachers, they observe lessons as teams, and they give feedback and coaching on how to ensure that effective literacy instructions taking place. So the first year, we did coaching, we focused on our JK and our SK teachers, and then this year, we focused again on SK and Grade 2. There are some schools where there might be an exception to that. We use data to decide the levels. We look at our data and say, where does it look like we need to have our first level of teaching reinforced? The other thing that we've been doing at the middle and high school level is a lot of staff development and reading in the content. And Doug Buell has been working with, he has been in to work with our building leadership teams, and since then, he's been with us almost four years now. He has worked in buildings directly with teachers. I can say, I think we've had a tremendous impact on all teachers understanding that reading is part of their job and their responsibility beyond elementary school. So I think that you may have seen some of that in almost every classroom, including even our art and music, and FIDE teachers have literacy as a focus with them. Okay, so, and the other thing here, too, is, you know, doing some differentiation this year that we did as well with our BLTs, so there's some other things you can look at. Teacher preparedness. Okay, the teacher, the Read to Lead Task Force talks about how not just teachers need to be, have staff development in literacy, but so do administrators, and that in that preparation, all teachers and administrators need to increase their skills in literacy instruction. And we've included our principals, as well as our district administration, in the staff development on reading. So in fact, this year, one of the things we did as a culminating activity for administrators at both the elementary and the secondary level is we had them create a rubric based on best practice and scientific research on how to, what to look for in a classroom at the elementary level and at the middle and high school level, if they were to see either reading in the content or effective literacy instruction. And they've been using that rubric, we had it reviewed by our reading consultants, and they've been using that this year as they do classroom observations. The other thing the task force talks about is adding rigor to teacher licensing. Massachusetts is a state that is number one in literacy in the United States, and so the task force is recommending that we look to the state of Massachusetts in getting some clarity on how to increase the rigor of our teacher preparation programs. Currently, we use a test called the Praxis 2, and the word just came out today that the Praxis 2, the Department of Public Instruction, talked about how the Praxis 2 that we're using is going to be revised. The task force was recommending that the state look to, toward this Massachusetts teacher licensing as, is a really good guide for what colleges should be doing to prepare teachers for literacy and what we should be doing to ensure they're prepared through the testing. Reading professionals, like reading specialists, should work with both teachers and students, and I feel like that's where we have moved toward coaching. You know, they're not just working with struggling readers, but they've also been asked to work with teachers as well. Recruit bright and motivated future teachers, and that teacher evaluation should include value-added. The state has also talked about teacher evaluation and has announced that 50% of a teacher evaluation will be value-added data and 50% will be best practice instruction in the classroom observation. So those are some of the things that we have also worked on this past year, looking at the evaluation process and where it's at, and even looking toward the summer, doing some staff development related to that for our administrators. Early childhood, early childhood does focus a lot on things the DPI should do. They should work with the Department of Children and Families to link early childhood programs. I thought most importantly in here, I highlighted that all 4K programs should have a sufficient literacy literacy component. We did, when we did our reading review four years ago, we included JK. JK at that time adopted the Little Treasures program. We also, as we worked on writing in our building leadership teams, we also included JK in that. We are doing one of the few pilots I know of, if not the only one. We're still doing a writer's workshop with our JK teachers where they're actually doing some writing and formative assessment with our 4K students. We also do beginning jolly phonics, we have handwriting without tiers, and jump starts. So there are some things that we have looked toward for literacy in our JK program. The DPI also agreed to look at the standards for JK and to assure that they're aligned with the Common Core. We, of course, will do that also. And the Department of Children and Families should strengthen the Young Star program. I don't know a lot about the Young Star program, but I do know that it helps families, advises them on good childcare for their children so that they could have some more information about where would be a good placement for their child before school starts, and they would give them some early childhood literacy ratings. State accountability, every adult, that's all of us, including teachers, administrators, school board members, community members, parents, all adults are responsible that children read by grade 3. The task force also mentions having some debate about whether or not to retain students that are struggling in reading. At this time, the task force unanimously did not recommend retention because they felt that in the state of Wisconsin, we have not yet worked on sufficient reforms to show that children, if children really need to do, to be retained. Until we kind of do our job, it's difficult to say that students should be retained. So as of right now, they're not recommending retention. Reading outcomes should be considered in teacher evaluation systems. That's what I just talked about when I said 50% of teacher evaluation systems will focus on literacy and it will focus on value-added. Value-added implies that when you factor out external things like socioeconomic status, then they look to see what kind of impact a teacher has on the growth of a child over the course of a year in, in learning. So that value-added implies a growth model. Early reading proficiency is a key measure in the state accountability system. Training on best practices for administrators, teachers is important, proven practices are important, and then lastly, that the state would encourage struggling readers to participate in strong evidence-based summer school programs. And even though we have our summer school information out, we also have reviewed, there's been some, we've been more authentic about our summer school offerings for our elementary children and actually had a very serious conversation about what we are offering for struggling readers and will be actually still offering more yet this summer that was not included in the recent summer school bulletin that went out by the Recreation Department. And I just want to say that tonight because I know our reading specialists are working at filling some gaps, and then we'll be communicating with parents about what's available. And then the state, on the state level, family involvement, they talk about putting books into the hands of low-income children. The state's supporting and encouraging programs that allow for parenting skills in literacy areas such as oral language, reading development. We do that in some of our, our Title I program is focused on math, however, we do include in that literacy for parents that attend those Title I evenings. It endorses reach out and read for low-income families. Those are things connected to when they're having checkups when, from mothers that are pregnant. And a general awareness and collaboration with adult literacy programs in the community and our schools. So in putting this together, it was a collaborative effort because I think it's really important for school personnel to have conversations about things like the Read/Lead Task Force. So we did this collaboratively so that we educate each other as we are also preparing to give you a presentation. The district reading specialists participated as well as Karen Hartman. We had school psychologists represented by Evelyn Kretcheck, Pat Gilbert, District Teacher Leader, and Leanne Nasey. Both of those individuals do coaching for reading in the content at the secondary level. And then Jean Paulus also joined us, our gifted and talented coordinator.
Board, are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Muufeld?
Thank you very much. That was very interesting. I especially liked the comparison to the Read/Lead model and what we're doing in Wauwautosa. That was very helpful. Just, I have three questions right away. The one is kind of starting from the beginning of your presentation. And in the screening section, we had some parents talk to us about their concern for some of the screenings at the, especially the junior kindergarten and the kindergarten level. And are we going to be doing some extra communication and education at those levels so that when we bring on the PALS for Senior K that they are comfortable and they know the purpose and why it's important?
Yeah, actually, Phil and I did follow up, I know, with one parent, I know that was before the board. And part of that is understanding that, you know, that it was, it's required, and so yes, that's an excellent point, and yes, we'll be educating parents. I mean, we, we will have to have conversations about what our plan is going to look like and then also be able to communicate that to parents in the community.
Great, thank you. My second question is about the interventions, the tiers of interventions, and it's, I'm thinking that the writing interventions are commingled here with the reading interventions, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, writing is a key component to reading. The actual intervention that you're seeing here is not, does not have writing interventions. This is a sample of reading. There are, sometimes it's very hard to separate the two, but we did work very specifically on writing last, we, after we did our adoption, we worked first on the implementation of that adoption, but then we did also try to strengthen the writing component through staff development all of last year at the elementary level. But that is not reflected in the document I shared tonight.
And I did, I also wanted to know about, and this is something I will need to find out more from you, maybe offline, but the writing interventions for the middle and high school levels, for example, at that age, they're doing more papers, and how do you know if a student is struggling in doing that? Even if they, I mean, most likely they're turning in their assignments on time, but you may not know that they're spending a lot of time putting them together, so.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. We have gone to common assessments, which we did not have in place, so three times a year, we do a common assessment that continues on through high school so that we have some points in place to be able to check to see where students are at in comparison to exemplars. With the Common Core alignment, there are also some exemplars of writing expectations and where students should be as well. So that is one checkpoint we put in place to have, where we stop to reflect and see where our students are at. But there's a lot of formative assessment going on in that area as well.
It's just hugely important for college readiness, you know, whether they're composing handwriting or composing on the computer, so.
Yes, yeah. We do have writing labs as well, but I did not include a lot of the writing in here. I was focusing on reading.
Right, no, I know, and that was kind of, so my third question is really under accountability and maybe more for Dr. Erdl, but the reading outcomes are considered for inclusion in the design of the teacher evaluations? How are they included in the evaluations?
The data's going to be collected by the state. It's going to be a state warehouse. The 50%, the evaluation is going to go through the state. So there will be a state warehouse through the WKCE right now, and as it moves into the smarter exams, and so they will collect all that, they will put the value-added data in with it, and that'll be given back to us as part of the evaluation process. So it's going to be not locally managed for one component, and some of it will be. Some districts aren't using MAPS, some are, some are using different assessments, so we'll have some input into it, but it's really going to be state-generated.
Do we currently use any measurements with our teacher evaluations?
Not, not specifically. We don't use test results.
It's more of a learning progression goal.
Correct.
That's how we're using it right now.
Correct.
We actually are using it formatively, it's for our teachers, as a way for them to reflect on improvement and growth, but, so that's an example of a formative assessment for teachers.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowder?
Thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. We haven't had many, if any, presentations on reading yet this year, so I'm really glad that we did that. I know this is not a time to discuss performance. I'm hoping we'll have another session where we talk about district data, but I have a couple of questions about that.
Sure.
On the slide where you talked about intervention, you mentioned there were 445 students, I think.
Yeah, that's elementary.
Elementary. Has that, since we started the new program, has that decreased at all, or is that about the same?
Um, you know, in order to answer that question, we'd have to look at our, like a cohort of students, so I can't give you that answer tonight. We are putting that data together over, we've actually started that. That's part of why I have some of the data pieces, but I have to, I don't want to say something and not have with any accuracy, but I will definitely include that in our data presentation.
Because hopefully, I mean, we have improved the reading program. If we're catching deficits earlier and have better interventions, that number should be going down, I hope.
Yeah, and we are looking at that even through some cohort data too, to see if where students are, you know, like that we've, if they've been intervened with, are they staying there? You know, or are they popping back up other years?
And I guess the other way to say that I had written down, do we have, is at the end of 3rd grade, are the number of students below 3rd grade reading level the same, or is that decreasing as well?
Okay, all right.
I mean, because that would be interesting to know. And hopefully, while we're doing all that, we're keeping track of which interventions are actually working or not working along the way.
We actually added in our Power School so that we could better, we have several different ways we're tracking interventions. Our reading specialists track them at the school building level and do a lot of anecdotal along with like the AmesWeb and other kinds of data that they use. Sometimes it's something that goes with the intervention, but so that we could have, like, more of a snapshot, be able to look at more frequently. We added into our Power School and our reading specialists keep it updated on what intervention a student has been receiving, and that's how we can tell when someone's exiting, like if they've exited or not. And we also can, that's part of what we looked at last week to determine like where some gaps are for next year with interventions. So where are we seeing kids coming out of this year? Were some places that we haven't felt we've had a strong intervention to be able to use? And so we did that last year, and we added two interventions this year that we feel that we've gotten some really good results with. That's, but, so we have them in Power School now so that we can easily pull that data out and look at it.
So when you talked about the 150 or so students that moved up a level in their intervention level, is that like after a whole year of intervention?
That's from the beginning of this year. So we start the year with identifying students and, and then targeting them with the intervention. So after the, you know, like the MAPS testing we used from last spring, and then again, as soon as we have it in the fall, we've identified already before the year starts students. So that would be from us doing an intervention from the beginning of this year. Some of those students are still from last year, but we re-identify them.
That number seems low to me. There probably are many factors that go into whether a student advances or not, but hopefully we can get that up too. Two more sort of question comments as I read through this, and I realize we've made great advances in our reading program. I'm glad that you have done that, but I think we can move up another level. I would like our district to be the Massachusetts of Wisconsin, if you want to put it that way, that they're trying to figure out, you know, what are they doing in Wauwautosa that's getting better results than what we're doing, so that's the basis behind my questions.
Yeah.
One thing that they mentioned in the Read/Lead Task Force was requiring all struggling students to participate in summer school. I'm just wondering if we have considered that or why we don't do that? If like, of the 300 students that didn't respond to their intervention, you know, why don't we continue?
We've talked about that, and in the past, there was a very strong, it's that fine line between us requiring it and actually getting the participation, and not all students, sometimes parents commit and they, they don't come to summer school, and we, this is all part of the conversation we had last week about, are there, is there anything else we can do to entice somebody, some of our struggling readers to school that we haven't considered? And just in a brainstorming session, we started talking about things appearing like basketball and literacy, iPads and literacy. So we can find some things that we can offer that might make it, so even the students might provide some leverage to want to participate, instead of making it seem like it's just a very, it's summer school and it's literacy-focused, which might not seem appealing to a struggling reader. So that's part of what we're going to be, we're going to finish that discussion next week and then see what kinds of creative solutions we come up with to try to do a way of attracting struggling readers that maybe hadn't committed even though they've been encouraged and our reading specialists have talked with parents and our teachers have talked to parents, but find that we still don't have them coming to summer school. So it's a fine line between saying you have to do it and...
Required was probably too strong of a word. I meant that, that we at least have the slots for all the students that want to come, and then add the interesting programs you're talking about would really increase it. I think in the past, we've only had very few slots in the summer for struggling readers.
Yeah, and, and part of what happened is if, the, actually, the reading specialist spent like a lot of time creating groupings, and then what would happen is if somebody doesn't show, it would throw the groupings off, and then they'd have to regroup, and then they would have students not grouped according to where maybe they could best meet their needs. So we tried, that's why we're having that discussion, saying, is there a better way for us to be able to do this so that teachers can still do some individualized or very small group instruction, but at the same time, be able to have maybe 10 students there, but maybe that's how we can use iPads or a sport. Like, we were talking even about getting some high school students that might want to pair with the reading intervention and teacher and be able to say, you, you'll take five, well, I have these, and you can play basketball or do an iPad, some iPad applications. So we're trying to be creative because we want to try and make it more attractive.
And my last comment slash idea is something that I've read about in some other states where, you've talked a lot about professional development for continuing teachers, which is really good. But some states have a, I don't want to say an exam, but a proficiency exam that continuing teachers need to pass to teach in a district.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering if that was something we can consider to make teaching reading, to even raise the bar even higher, but do it in a way that's obviously fair, where we provide, you know, within two or two years or whatever it is, you know, you need to pass this exam, but we will provide every possible professional development, which you may already be doing to do that. I'm just wondering, is that something you have considered?
You know, we hadn't considered an exam, but we did add into our interview process. We now have a literacy component to it. We have a math and a literacy component where we ask teachers to answer, we actually give them information ahead of time, so they have to prepare for the interview with, around a literacy scenario and situation where they bring data and have to talk about literacy data and how they monitor and intervene, that how they walk us through, how they help struggling readers. So we added that to our interview process. I'm not aware of something we could use for a test, but certainly we're open to the conversation of doing the best screening we can to get the best applicants. I think we're working a lot harder on that. As we interview, we're really trying to up the expectations of the interview process.
I mean, another idea that someone mentioned to me is maybe make that like a bonus-type situation, it's like we do for the national accreditation for some teachers, that if you reach this level, there's a benefit to you and to the students for that, but anyway.
Massachusetts is obviously a state to be well celebrated. We also have looked to them for our science review. They, they got an A in their state standards and a lot of the, the next generation framework. A lot of Massachusetts, there's, there's also a lot of alignment between what they do with science. So we certainly, without knowing that they were borrowing that from reading, but we, that's where we got lead for science as well, so it's a good model.
Thank you, that was a very nice review. Thank you.
Any other question or comment from the board? Mrs. Brandl?
To get back to the report...
To get back to the report, what we're seeing here are recommendations, correct?
Yes, many of which the state is acting on.
Okay.
Kind of as we speak.
Okay.
They started acting.
And is that happening through the DPI?
Some of it's happening through the DPI and some of it's happening through legislation.
Okay.
So and it's primarily, like the allocation of the funds has primarily been bipartisan. So there's.
Yeah, that, has there been anything other than that 800,000 for the early screening?
Yes, I believe there was actually just recently, I think there was another 400,000 for, let's see, to fund after-school parent outreach and teacher professional development. There is a bill presently asking to allocate 400,000 in existing funds to help get it started. So there are some initiatives in the legislature and then Tony Evers recently, the DPI sent out that they were choosing the screener for kindergarten. So some of it is the DPI's, actually, the article that came out today is where Governor Walker is thanking Tony Evers for acting on the Read to Lead recommendations by saying that the state was going to mandate the universal screener for kindergarten.
Okay, I guess so. I totally agree on the staff development and the fact that our teachers need to be teaching reading at every level and they need to be improving their skills and getting extra. I just am worried about the money because this is at a time where the state is telling us we can't pay teachers for their extra credits or their, or their time. So it's going to be very interesting to see if they're going to be able to back that up because.
Yeah, we'll try to also at a district level do, as we look at the PALS screener and look at that in comparison to like where our MAP screener fits into that and possibly look for some trade-offs. You know, if we're going to use PALS and we have a way to track the data and be able to measure growth and after we see what, you know, learn more about that, that might be, there might be some places where we trade off and try to buy back a little bit here or there. But I know my budget, you know, like even when the reading specialists are asking for an intervention, if we have a research-based intervention that we're looking for, we feel like that's something we don't say no to.
Right.
You know, Dr. Erdl's been really, and Mr. Mack have both been very supportive about saying we have to find ways to make that work.
Yeah, and I think we can do that. I'm more concerned about the bonus-type discussions and those kinds of things because it doesn't seem that, you know, we're going to be getting money to do those things. But I appreciate the way that you presented the report and gave information about what we're doing versus what the committee offered. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions, board?
I have a question. I kind of go way 40,000 feet and to understand me over this next year, I, my formative years were, some of them included, not to promote religion, but just to say the Lutheran catechism and whatever was said, there was always a what does this mean section. So in life, I always ask, what does this mean? What does this mean to us in a very fundamental way? Is there anything you need from the board? Is there anything in this that fundamentally changes what we do? I know you've identified some things that are, that our tool was a different tool, but our direction was the same. Obviously, there's some funding concerns. What would be the key takeaways that you'd like to communicate to the board about what this is going to do to us and do for us over the next year or so?
Well, you have, the board focuses literacy and I think staying the course, helping support us to stay the course and to continue to support us as we, you know, as we stay on the path and it's a continual process, you know, it's, we feel really strongly, I see I have a couple of my reading specials here, but that, I think that we have made a really firm commitment. We want all students to read at grade level and we had, we had those conversations throughout the year. We started the year with a really intense conversation about wanting to meet the needs of all readers. And so I think just staying committed to it as you are, I feel very, I think that, I feel really, it's been a really positive thing, a long-range plan. Without the long-range plan, we maybe wouldn't have gotten on this path four years ago. So I feel that that was very helpful to Wauwatosha School District and helped us to spend some money in the right places because we were able to purchase core program. I don't think any of this is possible without starting with a core program. So continuing to be able to support us in doing those things are based on research and best practice. And we'll try to bring you some data that shows what your supporting works.
Even, even good things will mean change and changes by nature disruptive. Is there, with that lead in, is there anything about this that's disruptive or in any way knocks us off stride as we move in any kind of a new direction?
No, I just think it puts more teeth into what we're doing and is making it, it's a much stronger commitment and the message is much, it helps support the work that we're doing in even a greater capacity. So I think it gives even more teeth to what we've already been doing.
So at this time, I'm hearing there's nothing in particular you need extra from the board as far as support or endorsement or backing that you can think of off the top of your head and that doesn't mean it can't come back to us later, but.
Yeah, I might hold you to thinking about that.
All right. There may be some recommendations in the budget that you'll see in the next, the next meeting, I believe, that will address some of the literacy components, what we're trying to accomplish. And I think we'll point some of those out in the budget.
And that they'll be highlighted in the budget, which is something we've been wanting to move towards, is kind of a focus-based, you know, budget conversation. We know there is focus, but we like to use the board meetings as an opportunity to highlight that for you. Seeing no other board comment, is there any public comment or any questions from the public about this presentation or this program?
I will just add one that I, Barb Miller and Carrie Streishtrus here are both reading specialists in the district and Evelyn Kretcheck, the school psychologists are here this evening to support, and I just want to thank them again for their support and work on this. Oh, and Linda Foraborn?
Turn for.
Linda, who's also a reading specialist.
Okay, well, thank you. Is, that finishes that item, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, I see we have a number of scouts in the, in the room. You've probably doubled or tripled the normal attendance at board meetings here, although we know many people watch us on our, on our broadcast. So we'd like to thank you for attending and seeing what we do. I know this is a silly question, but when is our next meeting?
21st.
The 21st, okay, good. Then we will have another meeting before the end of the month. Any other comment from the board of a non-substantive nature? Anything you wish to suggest for the future for agenda discussion? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Crowner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muofeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 8:20.